As well as our calculations, we'd actually be going back to D E S for an amendment through our site specific permit to include this work. And I guess the other piece of drainage that we need to talk about, that's the water quality aspect. The other part was quantity, to make sure we're not throwing a lot more water in one direction. Again, we're going to feed off of what we had originally approved back three years ago. If you recall, three years ago, we were saying, you know, it was actually kind of a no-brainer at that point because we were reducing the impervious coverage on site by so much because we were, you know, taking down the rear wing and creating so much more green space on site. Obviously, you know, have a big chunk of impervious area that was going to green. With the calculations, even by adding this particular lot in, you still have a net decrease in impervious coverage on this site from where you started before you ever started construction. So in essence, you will end up with more green when we're said and done than you had before you started. Therefore, the net peak runoff from this site will actually have a lower peak flow than what you had out there pre-three years ago. With that, we certainly have the architect here, if anybody's interested in anything with a particular addition to the footprints or whatnot, but if not, we can certainly open up questions. Thank you. Mr. Sullivan?
Yes. Will this system also take care of the auto body shops, lubricants, and so forth? Where is that waste going?
Actually, that was part of our previous, three years ago, plan?
Yeah, but you redesigned that system now, right?
No. No, I think the reason out here is fully independent of what was, the oil shop was down here. They had their own oil-water separating units for that.
Okay. And I guess my question to Peter is, or maybe to you, what about the science labs? Do you have a separate system for the waste, for the disposal of acids and alkalines and things of this nature? Or how is that treated?
Yes, you have a separate system. There's a system inside the building that it gets treated.
I'm sorry, just-
Acid neutralization-
Just your name and address for the record.
Wes Pawnee with Team Design.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You made mention earlier of a treatment swale that either exists now, I think that-
Earlier, during the conditional use portion of the-
Yes.
Two weeks ago?
The stormwater treatment system that you have, the three-chambered unit, the water flows out of that and into what? Does it go into the treatment swale or does it go into the-
No, they actually, you know, the board, sir. The entire building is actually located out here. It's right in line with the catch spaces that are in the rear of the site. The water's in both of the catch spaces, take the treatment unit, break back into a closed pipe, and eventually, you know, flow down the school to the 16-inch pipe that we sold out. That 16-inch pipe comes down, goes down to the courtyard, to the musician and existing school, comes up to a manhole out here, and from there is the existing pipe from 50, we figured that they cut down the Olympic football field and actually take it on the far side of football field and drive down.
So it then goes into the wetlands from the treatment unit itself?
After going through all that pipe, yes.
So there's no other treatment other than just the three-chambered stormwater treatment?
We had the some and whatnot on the catch spaces. That's your primary treatment unit, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, I was wondering how you're going to handle runoff coming down Summit Ave with a new parking area there by where the building is being demolished?
Summit Ave being up here-
Right.
There is a crest in some way, maybe 200 feet from this section up here before it cresting goes the other way. So there is some stormwater that actually runs off today. That's it picked up in the existing closed drainage system that picks it up currently. One thing that actually did come up, actually, earlier this morning, as part of our traffic and safety review, apparently the water right here on this corner has been having some erosion problems with some drainage actually getting into the gutter and roding the lawn, whatnot. What we're trying to help that out is the driveway, basically pick up curbing and run it down around the corner to just channelize it and keep it on the curb, hopefully for two things. It'll help out erosion with that neighbor's lawn, and secondly, I guess, some of the students, you know, if the gate was closed, they like to sneak around on that side now to obviously prevent that as well.
So does that mean that people will still be parking there along that roadway going down?
Down here.
Right.
The intention is no. I mean, that was always part of our presentation three years ago was by reconfiguring this, keeping the parking there was, you know, the idea was to try and alleviate that parking on that side of that roadway.
We must be on now, Sophie. Any other questions?
On your erosion control notes, it calls out for stabilized construction entrances. I didn't see anywhere in the plan where those were to be located. If you could just add that.
We could add it, if you'd like. I mean, obviously, this is the majority of the work's going to be in this area. It makes sense to have it, and quite honestly, it's going to benefit the schools to have a traction map like that. Typically, you have them as you leave the site-
Correct.
So it's not tracking on the public roadway. However, you know, obviously, this road's in, Summit's in, so it would be just in the rear of the site.
Right, where, I'm assuming where you're leaving the construction area.
Correct. So basically, it'll protect the existing school's parking lot.
Correct. If you could just put that on the plan, do you add it to the plan, please? Thanks.
Any other questions?
Just a couple. I noticed also with the addition, there was a loss of three handicap spaces. Where do those propose to be moved to?
The actual site is an echo of handicap parking, handicap parking spaces as of today.
I know. When we had discussed it before, we liked the idea of having some handicap spaces in the rear of the building. Is there a chance that we can get those back there?
We, of the existing spaces in this area, kind of following a little bit with this-
You had three spaces-
Correct.
Excuse me, two spaces that were in the rear. Is it possible that we can, and now it doesn't seem that you have any new ones in the rear.
Correct. You have existing spaces here, that would be, obviously, the logical location would be just to strike some of those as handicaps. We don't want to do that with these spaces because technically, the existing school in the pavement will not meet ADA requirements. The option is, what we could do is strike some head-ins down here, but if you put them up on the existing pavement because of the pavement slope, they will not meet ADA requirements.
You can put them where you like. I just like the two in the back. It just seems unfair to have all the spaces up front and try to have someone then traverse the entire building if they work in the back area or they're trying to get the class in the back area. Can we also just touch also again on the parking that comes down connects Andrew Drivas to Summit? He said the intent is to not have students and faculty and so forth parking along that edge.
Correct.
Is there a plan in place to stop that or how are you going to, is it going to be enforced?
It's going to have to be enforced. It's an issue. Certainly, that was always what we had spoke about.
So it's not curbed all the way down?
No, interestingly, that conversation actually happened this morning of potentially getting, probably to do that, see if that could be worked into the budget, but that's a preliminary at this point.
Peter, could you?
If you would, I think it is sort of clearly our intention to limit or restrict the parking along that road. The fact that the practice of coming up towards Summit will become one-way. You will not be able to come up over the hill, which is going to be the main entryway on somebody from South Street with the crossing cars, or buses who come that way. And I'm sure we might have to stop the traffic coming in anyways. Typically now, the people who park there come up to Summit and make their way. They're down the hill and park along, on the grass.
Right.
The curbing is going to stop down there, and I think we're going to look into putting curbing all the way. I think that, that along with enforcement on our own will eliminate or limit the fact that parking there. I guess probably when you have graduation, when you have certain events there, things just happen and then hum from before you think you have. But it is our intention to put all the parking into the reorganized launch and eliminate where that parking gets placed.
I understand on a graduation or special event that you, people are going to park wherever they can because there's so many. But I know, you know, dropping my son off at school on days, you know, the cars get, they pack right up along the edge there and it starts getting difficult moving around and, you know, God forbid there was ever a reason to get, you know, a fire department or anything down there, it could be difficult.
We agree. I think if anything, if there was improvement on what we are prescribing here, the cars would be not no longer coming down that road from Summit, they would be on the other side. And I think that would be much clearer of blocking of the road and therefore, all the more likely that it will get prevented by supervision.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public, like, oh, actually, I'm sorry, Peter, is anything else from?
No, I think certainly the area, the technical information needed to be here, but I think we've covered all what we need to cover. Are there questions from the board?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone in the public like to speak two, four against this application at this time? Anyone in the public? Two, four against? Third time, seeing no one rise in the closed public hearing?
What is your pleasure, boy?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the plans as submitted.
Second? Discussion on the motion? I think we had some stipulations too, didn't we, David?
Yes, the six stipulations as listed, like plus-
Plus the parking, restriping for two handicap in the rear of the building?
That's agreeable to the count.
That was the only stipulation, is everything.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we have everything covered. Any else? If not, any discussion on the motion? Seeing that, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. We're all set. We're all clear. We're going to take just a three-minute in-place break while they're setting up for our next public meeting.
Mr. Chairman, if we could, if the members of the planning board could save the plans, Raymond has the use for them for some of the-
Yeah, I work with some teenagers, the Salvation Army. I think they might be interested in some maps, maybe for themselves or their friends of the new high school.
They're also great, too. I have with my little kids, they're coloring them in.
Definitely.
Yeah. I'll even say that some of their coloring is better than what we've seen some people bring in. Just going to see if we're on TV. David, it's awfully scary seeing you using technical pieces of equipment.
Press the on button, David.
You make one mistake and they never forget. Formatting the hard drive is not a good thing yet. While we're waiting for that to start up, I just want to say we are on, invite the folks at home to have joined us. They got, they came on about halfway through the high school application. In case anyone at home was wondering why we had a late start, I knew we've set up new cameras and microphones here at city council chambers and just had a little technical difficulty getting them up and going. So I'll begin now reopening, going on to item B. A public meeting is scheduled for comment and discussion relative to a draft amendment to the 1995 zoning ordinance as amended. This amendment addresses residential use as allowed in Central Business A and Central Business B districts limiting the ground floor and related areas to non-residential uses. Copy of the proposal are available in the planning department office. You're on the tape.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief, but this is an opportunity to give a little bit of background as to why the planning board and the city's consultant on the master plan has been working on this effort. The issue is, is how to best manage ground floor areas in the Central Business A and B districts. To give a sense of it, we'd like to show that the city of Portsmouth is limited in the amount of land that it generally has to develop. This is an overall map showing the wetlands. This is another map showing basically our parks and recreation area and conservation land. But this is basically demonstrating is that the land area in the city is relatively limited. Also, since the last master plan, we've seen a significant development at the trade port. This picture tends to demonstrate the type of development that is occurring at the trade port. We have significant facilities on very large lots. The regional job impact already exceeds 15,000, maybe down a bit now, but the potential is there. And the employment actually exceeds what was there when it was the Air Force base. This is a new focus in the city. The actual business area of the Central Business District is relatively small and encompasses approximately 90 acres. Within that area, we have a great deal of demand that is outstripping the ability of the actual area to support. So we're seeing a lot of trends developing. One that we're well familiar with is proposal, for example, to change the Pier Two restaurant, which has had a lively history. The site has also had a lively history in terms of industrial development and as a ferry landing, but this is being proposed to go to residential use. Other changes to residential uses are these structures that at one time held many a business. Some of you may remember the dive shop. It also held many apartments above the ground floor. Now, in some cases, these are single-family residences breaking up the streetscape or, if you will, looking like a missing tooth in the facade of the downtown. In this instance, we're looking at a building that would maybe propose to go from completely commercial to a case of where it'll be less, it'll have more residential, and it'll be less retail, however, the storefront may be preserved. Other changes that once were residential are demonstrated by these sites. I think many of you can recognize them, one being across from the old city hall and on Dana Street. Another change that has occurred is where we've had previously open space, perhaps due to a building burning or being demolished, but it's been used as parking or open space for a number of years, and now it's changed completely to a residential use. Other development that is likely to happen, even since this, you're seeing the change of 325 State Street to a new banking facility, and would be anticipated that at some point the vacant lot next to what we now know as Eagle Ford will be proposed for development. In this case, again, it would be changing from retail and parking to more intense uses. An innovation to show you how some things do benefit the downtown. In this area, this was a parking lot, it's now been changed to business, but it still provides parking, a useful model, although there are issues with how, excuse me, there are issues with how you would access the parking, which would need to be considered. The former church that is now an office, now vacant, or I believe vacant, but will certainly be filled with commercial space. There are also a great deal of transition areas that are right on the fringe of the downtown. If I took a more recent picture, you'd see the full frame of the building, but this is the former gas station right at the corner or just down from Haymarket Square. Other changes on the fringe, on this parking lot, there were two residential houses that were torn down. Another change on Port Street is where a church has changed to a single-family residence. Some examples of mixed use that we're probably well familiar with that have tended to work. Here we have the corner of Pleasant and State Street. Another interesting one showing also, by the way, Portsmouth's love, I think, for scale and particular roof features. Flat roofs are not very common. What was, is again, probably John Sullivan certainly remembers, the former Lee Building. This building is pretty much a replica, or at least representing the footprint of that The new and the not so new, again, we have mixed uses. Intact street levels, street level uses along Market Street. A very unusual feature in our downtown, a freestanding building. Other examples of mixed use, additional changes of what was once formerly vacant land or perhaps parking being converted now into additional development with some parking being provided. Obvious reuse potential, be it for a parking facility or a mixed-use facility. It is identified in C I P and will certainly be looking at this in the future. You may remember the stone building that was there that housed the taxis down on Lower Market Street. It's now a vacant lot, but I suspect that we will see development here. Perhaps less understood is because of the way the downtown is developed with only 5% open space and a height of roughly 50 to 60 feet, that you actually have development potential to go up. We have a lot of issues that will be coming to us, should this be parking structures, open space, what type of partnerships will be formed. Additional development potential on State Street near the temple. An area of large development potential would be the parking that supports the Sheridan, the northern tier, as well as one of the more fragile areas that needs our protection. I think these are many of the issues that we, the board, has tried to confront as it went through its work sessions. And with that, we ask our consultant to work with you, and he's prepared to make a presentation as well.
Thank you, David.
Good evening. I'm Rick Tainer. I'm the lead consultant on the master plan from Tainer and Associates, and I have also been working with the planning department on this particular zoning proposal, which we see as the first step, the first implementation measure to come out of the master plan process. And as you know, because you're all involved in it, the master plan has been going on for something over a year now, with the major effort initially involving the study circles process last spring and early summer that involved many people throughout the city. And one of the key issues that came up in every group of the study circles was the importance of the downtown to the city. People feel very passionately about the downtown, about its character, but also they recognize its importance not just to their own quality of life, residents' own quality of life, but also to the economic vitality of the city. As David mentioned, it's serving as really the service center for all of the employment growth that's going on at the trade port. It's also obviously important because it draws visitors into the city from the region and from beyond the region. And so the continuity of economic uses that attract people downtown, residents, visitors, employees, is very important, and people in the study circles recognize that. And they also recognize that what's really special about the downtown area is that it's a mix of uses. It's not just a commercial center. It has residential uses, a very strong residential component to it, but it has a lot of street-level vitality because you have that mix of uses with primarily businesses on the ground level and those businesses primarily being businesses that attract people, retail, services, shops, and so forth. And then the upper levels, you have some more offices and residences. So it's a really good mix. And there's concern that because of what's going on in the real estate market right now, that there's a lot of pressure to move toward conversion with some of those commercial uses to residential uses. You're starting, as David pointed out in some of the photographs, you're actually seeing residential uses push out commercial uses in some areas, not right in the center of the CBD, but more along the edges, along State Street toward the river, for example. And there's concern that as we move into the implementation of the northern tier, the expansion of the CBD into northern tier, where residents generally would like to have more of the same type of scale and vitality and diversity we have in the core of the Central Business Districts, that as we move into that area, there could be a possibility of residential uses foreclosing commercial development possibilities. And so we looked at possibilities and came up with this proposal after a couple of iterations, which essentially is very simple. Right now, in your Central Business District, you allow mixed uses of all sorts without any type of restriction. And what is proposed is to change the use table so that in the Central Business A and Central Business B district, you can have mixed uses, but those mixed uses have to include non-residential uses on the first floor. We did look at some, a little bit more stringent versions of this. For example, the city of Portland, Maine, has a pedestrian activity district in the air corridor, which not only requires non-residential uses, but requires specific types of non-residential uses that are very high pedestrian traffic generators, and specific types of service uses and retail uses. We looked at that, we looked at that as a possibility, but for this stage, we felt that it might be going a bit too far too fast. So what we're simply suggesting is to change the use table in a couple of places so that the, so that new construction or conversions or expansions of buildings in the CBA and CBD district require that if it's a mixed use, that the ground floor be non-residential. Of course, in doing that, we had to figure out what the ground floor was. So the proposed amendment also includes a definition of ground floor, which says that if a, any story of a building that is either six feet above or six feet below, or within six feet above or six feet below, the finished grade of the street entrance. So you could have a building where you want a few steps, a few steps down to a ground floor or a few steps up to a ground floor, and if the building happened to be on a hill, you might actually have two floors that qualify as ground floors. But the importance of this is really keeping the continuity of the commercial uses in the street front. David pointed out that the, that you have some uses that are, you call them missing teeth in the, in the, in the street front, but they're really, they can be dead spaces. They're fine on their own, but studies have found out that in business districts, even a very short area, when you get to a private use, a use that doesn't draw people in, can cause people to turn around, pedestrians to turn around and go back toward the core. And as I said, as we're looking at the northern tier and trying to build on what we already have in the downtown, it's important that we don't have lawn dead spaces in the downtown area that don't encourage people to keep walking along and finding new places. So that's basically it. It's a very simple, two very simple changes. One, the creation of a definition of ground floor, and the second, a change in the use table so that uses that are, that are entirely, well, I guess, uses that are entirely residential wouldn't be allowed, and uses that are mixed use would require that the first floor be non-residential. With that, are there any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of questions. In the proposed wording, 44A, says that the ground floor shall consist entirely of retail, business, or service uses. Can you define service?
Actually, you have an earlier version of that, the table. The actual current wording says, that was a previous version. The current one says shall consist entirely of non-residential uses.
This was the one that came into our packet, so this is what I wanted.
That was a previous version. Actually, I have, we changed that subsequent to that. Actually, I have, we changed that subsequent to that, I think. Maybe the wrong one went out.
That may be true.
Yeah. So the one, the version I have says entirely of non-residential uses.
Are there other changes?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think that poses a problem.
Are there other changes that were, can you go through? Are you able to go through some of the other changes? I think that was some.
That was the only change from the two, the two versions.
Yeah. Okay. That's the only change from the, from what we have.
Would you, would you say again slowly, so I can pick that up, what's, what the exact wording is?
Just take out the words, I have the old one here also, take out the words, retail, business, or service, and change that to non-residential.
Okay, and central business, residential, entirely of non-residential uses. Okay, then that sort of answers that issue. The second question I have, in the business district, at least one, this is 44B, in the business district, at least one-third of the gross floor area shall be devoted to non-residential uses.
The, the only changes, the only changes that are being proposed are those that are bold, so that phrase exists in your current ordinance right now.
That's correct.
That does exist in our current ordinance.
The only changes are the, the, the change from P to N in line 43, and the insertion of A in line 44.
Okay, well, unfortunately, what I'm working with isn't bolded, isn't any of that, so, I mean, I can't tell that.
Sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions at this time? Okay.
I think board members should recall that your last work session versus the version that you were working with, and that was the one that was referenced, and I started this process.
Yeah, I know that I do recall, and I do recall that we revised that language.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So anyone in the public like to make comment at this time? Anyone in the public? Third time, I'm gonna close the public meeting.
Mr. Chairman, what the department is looking for, based on the work sessions that we've had with it, is that you favorably recommend this onto the city council, so that the city council can initiate having an ordinance prepared and conduct the final public hearing.
So moved?
Second.
Second discussion, Mr. Cochrane.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, as all the way through this process, I've always been concerned about the blanket prohibition of something, you can or cannot do something. I'm, I'm not so sure this is really as big a problem as it may seem, although David does make a very convincing presentation. I just want to make sure that if one were to come to the city with a proposal, for instance, the Porter Street townhouse, if, if that were to come under these conditions, the process of, of at least getting that approved would be to seek a variance from the Board of Adjustment, is that correct?
So long as the first floor is not non-residential, yes.
Okay. A special exception or variance is?
It's the way it's written right now would be a variance.
Okay. But that is a possibility, and in fact, that would be what they would have had to have done, but assuming this was in place when Porter Street was proposed.
Hypothetically, that is the action that you are seeking by preparing the amendment, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
We had a really interesting master planning meeting about affordable housing, and briefly this, this ordinance came up in the master plan work session that we had, and one of my concerns is, I've been living in the city for years, and my parents lived in many cities, and they don't own property, and probably won't own property for the rest of their lives. I probably don't want to be in that boat, but a lot of people downtown have naturally low-income housing, low-rent housing, not low-rent, but reasonable rent housing in many ways, simply because the first floor, or the first and second floors of a building are retail, and remaining floors has only a certain amount of square footage. I've lived in two areas of the downtown, and my fear is that we do have Porter Street townhouses, that that becomes the trend, that what we'll end up with is everybody who can afford the biggest house downtown will move down there, and the residential spaces will be lost. It's not just the residential spaces for the purpose of business, but it's the public walkways as well. I think this ordinance is an important step toward that. It integrates a lot of different aspects from economic development, making sure we have a diverse downtown, business, a business-diverse downtown, but also a socially diverse downtown. And I'm, I'm very happy with the, with the work the planning department and our consultant has done on this, and I, and I'm more than, I more than overwhelmingly support this ordinance to send along to the council.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. One thing I'd like to say in a true good light is that the document that we were given this evening, it says, "Over the course of developing the city master plan, concerns were raised through the study circles and in the public meetings regarding to this." I would just like to say that, you know, this board has discussed this type of an ordinance for the last 10 years. So it, it's not a fact that it just popped up out of the sky somewhere. I think probably the study circles got it from a very capable planning department that this needed to be taken care of, so I'd just like to have that on the record.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'm gonna call a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye. Okay, moving on. See, the application of Islington Woods LLC for property located off Fourthwick Avenue. Assessor Plan 234 as Lot 7-4A, and owned by Islington Woods LLC, and for property located off Barbary Lane. Assessor Plan 234 as Lot 1, and owned by Northern Utilities Incorporated. Where preliminary and final subdivision approval is requested, so as to subdivide two lots into three lots with the following. Proposed Lot 7-4B with an area of 3.478 acres and continuous street frontage off Fourthwick Avenue. Proposed Lot 7-4A with an area, the lot area of 6.488 acres and continuous street frontage off Fourthwick Avenue. And proposed Lot 1 decreasing an area from 5.226 acres to 3.624 acres and having access off Barbary Lane and no continuous street frontage off Barbary Lane. And with all proposed lots lying in an office research district with a minimum lot area of three acres and 300 feet of continuous street frontage are required. Would like to open this tight.
Mr. Chairman, if I may first indicate that I will be abstaining from discussion and voting on this particular item.
Thank you, Congressman.
Good evening. My name is Bill Dusep from Dusep Survey. I'm representing Islington Woods and Northern Utilities this evening for the proposed subdivision. Along with me this evening is William Tangway from McNeil, Taylor &amp; Gallow, and Steve Schuster, representative from Islington Woods. That was a long paragraph of introduction. Let me see if I can put a synopsis to that to help explain to you what is being proposed. Today, there are two lot parcels out there, and this presentation plan here describes those two parcels being, the area shaded in blue and the area shaded in a darker green is an existing parcel today on Fourthwick Avenue.
Excuse me, just a minute. Pardon me for interrupting. If there's anyone in the public that'd like to stand up along here to take a look at this, please feel, feel free to, to step up. Reason we can't turn it or move it back further is because we still have the cameras on to be able to have it.
I'll start that section over.
Thank you. There's also a hands-free mic, that is easier, right on the, right underneath the papers. There you go.
Okay, there are, there are two parcels involved. There's one parcel that is approximately eight acres in size, that is the area shaded in blue here and in green here. The second parcel is the Northern Utilities parcel, which is shaded in yellow and a light green here. What is being proposed is two lots today. Should we get approval, there will be three lots. The third lot would be this, this piece over here. So a portion of land from this property along Fourthwick Avenue would make up this area, and then a portion of this lot back here would make up this, so the dark green and the light green would be combined into a single lot.
Any questions for the applicant at this time? No? Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the public who'd like to speak two, four against this application at this time?
Will there be access?
Yeah, ma'am, if you'd like to come on up, just your name and address for the record. If all questions can be addressed up to the board, and we'll see to it that all your questions are answered.
My name is Rachel Barrett. I live on Barbary Lane, and I'm curious to know if there would be access to these lots through Barbary Lane.
From what I, what I read earlier, the answer is no, they will all be coming off of Fourthwick, is that correct?
You are correct. Thank you.
Do you, Northern Utilities access would remain?
Yes, Northern Utilities property will still have access off of, off of Barbary, as it does existing.
My name is John Whitman. I live on Fosh Avenue, which is off Barbary Lane, cul-de-sac. I'd like to reinforce the hope among local residents that there is no access from Barbary Lane onto these lots. If you are familiar with Barbary Lane, you know, it really fits the definition of the lane, it's very narrow, rather ambulating, has two railroad tracks across it, serves about 12 houses in that small neighborhood, and if there is access to these lots in any future development, there would be a quantum increase in traffic, I think, even as it uses a back, back entrance. And without major widening and modifications to the lane, the lane simply couldn't stand that kind of increase. I've had access to some of the recommendations by the planning department. I think they're excellent, and I would certainly hope that the board would approve them. Just one other comment, I think anybody who's walked that track will probably realize that there are some wetlands involved, and I certainly hope that will be taken into consideration in the future development. That's about all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the public? I'd speak two, four against this application at this time. Anyone else in the public? Third time, I'm gonna close public hearing. Seeing no one, I'm gonna close it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I would recommend that board members, as they perused the department's recommendation, might want to seek clarification from the applicant on some of the issues that have been, or the conditions that are proposed, so that we can frame a little more of the general framework for this application, as I assume you'll be seeing it in the future.
Do you have an extra copy of your review?
Yep. Those are the 16 points, right? Yeah, why don't you just, can you just briefly touch through them, I'd be terrific. Especially highlighting number 10 for the audience.
Okay, would you like me to step down, one through 16?
Yes, please.
Fine. Item, and this is a memorandum from the planning board dated today, and having just received it, I will read the items and then address those.
Actually, it's dated for today's meeting, but it was provided to the board much earlier.
That the application be amended to show the total of three lots and accompanying fees.
If you'd like, I can address that one for you when that one comes up. It's the way we administer our, our subdivision rules and regulations, so technically you're dealing with three lots, so you need to amend the application to so reflect and pay the appropriate fees. We assume that's no problem.
No problem. That the plot itself show all significant land features, including, in particular, all wetland areas. Section 4 requirement preliminary flat number.
But that means that the flat plan, Mr. Chairman, the plot plan that gets recorded actually will show those features. That's a requirement of the city.
Okay, so significantly in features, I'm assuming you're excluding contours and topography from that?
Actually, that comes in later, but you did provide, and it does not have to be on the plot plan, so.
Very good. Item four, that the, that as appropriate, the edge of all wetland areas be provided, and as appropriate, any wetland buffer as required by Article 4.6.
That is on the, the wetlands buffer. We have a wetlands buffer that comes off 100 feet from the wetlands, and that that'd be drawn, shown and drawn on the, on the plans.
And to give you a little bit of background, the concern here is that if the wetlands are contiguous and are a half acre, even if they're off the lot line, they need to be shown because they are jurisdictional. So what you'd be doing is showing the edge of wetland and defining whether or not it's jurisdictional, so that we have some recommendation or guidance on that.
You are aware that the wetlands are shown on your topographic plan?
Correct, but we need to be, see the edge of wetland 100 feet, and we need some statement as to the surrounding wetlands, as to whether they're contiguous and equal, half acre.
Understood.
My suspicion is that in total, there's a half acre or more of wetlands, hence making notes jurisdiction. If you can indicate that they are not, then we have that as a statement.
That the Fourthwick Avenue right-of-way be better defined on the subdivision, so that it shows such particular features, such as intersecting lot lines, curb cuts, and a general orientation of what is existing on the northern side of the right-of-way. I think those are townhouse parcels over there, is that, they come across the street from?
One of the adjacent parcels would be Hospital Corporation of America, and trying to locate the driveway relationships to the other driveways. And if there is any other driveways onto the city property, those will be shown. Basically, we need definition on the northern side of Fourthwick Avenue.
That in this vicinity, that the curb cuts serving the Jackson Gray Building and the hospital lot be identified. Same, same issue?
Correct, yep.
That the topographic plan be prepared for, for recording with the plot plan, and that the plot plan reference the topographic plan?
Which we just discussed.
So you would like the topographic plan to be recorded?
Suitable for recording.
Okay. You're probably aware of the flat law, the proposed flat law that would prohibit that in the future?
I'm sorry?
You're probably aware of the proposed flat law by the municipal association that would prohibit topographic. It doesn't affect this application, but by January next year, you won't be able to do that.
It's not the last one yet.
Yep. That the better, that better definition be provided on the plot plan documenting adjacent ownership along a limited portion of this right-of-way, so as to aid in identifying particular locations.
I can speak to that one. Barbary Lane is rather critical to a lot of residents in the area, so since it is shown going through the Northern Utilities lot, we need to have some more delineate, not survey, but more of a representation of what the existing conditions are, so that if I lived out there, I can go to the plot plan and see where, where these things are in relationship to my property.
That existing right-of-ways be identified that serve the Northern Utilities lot. The department believes that a former railroad, railway right-of-way belonging to Concon Railroad is used for access ingress through the Northern Utilities lot.
So you just want to make sure you check all your right-of-ways on there. So you just want to make sure you check all your right-of-ways on there. We have reason to believe that the railroad might have access to the property, and if it is, it needs to be so marked on the drawings.
Okay. That the plat plan shall stipulate no access or egress from proposed lot 7-4A to Barbary Lane. 7-4A being?
Right, Mr. Kim. Which is just more or less reinstating exactly what you've said tonight, that it would not have access on there.
I would like to speak to two items on here, and one of them is number 10. You wanted me to talk now?
Yeah, you might as well, since we're on number 10, that's a perfect time to do it.
Okay. Number two says that the plan itself show significant land features, including, in particular, all wetland areas and so forth. And then number 10 says to stipulate no access and egress onto Barbary Lane. As most of us know, Barbary Lane used to go all the way through across Bothwick Avenue, went across the Copley Development Area, and used to go onto Boyd Road years ago. In fact, just a few years ago, in the Copley Development Area, there used to be a burn-in that stopped vehicles from moving across there. And I just want to make sure that the people that own this property realize that that road is closed and there is no access or egress to that road in the future. I wouldn't want somebody to come in five or 10 years down the line and say, "Well, we found a map that showed an old road on there. Therefore, we're going to open it up to Barbary Lane or to Bothwick Avenue," or vice versa. So I just want to make sure that the owners understand that that road is closed and closed for good. And I want it to be a matter of record so that sometime down the line, somebody remembers that.
Item number 11, that the building envelope on lot 7-4A be corrected or else stipulate how a structure can be built on the land encumbered by an easement owned by New Hampshire Electric Company.
Just show a building envelope area that includes the easement area, assuming that that was an error, since you can't build under the electric lines.
Yeah, okay. That as appropriate, item number 12, that as appropriate, any adjacent lots in common ownership should be identified on the plat. I think all the butters are identified on the plat.
Guess here it's more a question. We're aware of other parties that may be, so the question is, are there any other contiguous lots that are in common ownership? If they are, they should be shown. If there are not, they don't need to be shown. But sort of a yes or no.
Item number 13, the documentation shall be provided verifying whether or not other permits from the state federal are required.
Which is just a statement on there. If they're required, then we'll have to have reference to them. If they're not required, then just a reference saying that they're not required.
Item number 14, confirm that the plat provides elevation data for the flood zone.
I believe you referenced the firm map, and I'm just trying to make sure that we're also meeting that requirement.
Yeah, it's according to the firm map, it's Zone C, and we identified the community panel number.
I believe you do. So you may meet that requirement.
What in addition to that are you looking for?
No, you may meet it. It was just, it was a question, so you may have already met it.
That footnotes relative to easements be corrected from 10 to 9. Is there a numbering issue?
Yes.
Five, six, seven, eight, nine.
I had to know the plans, so I wasn't looking for that.
Understood. I see your suggestion. Item number 16, that when all the aforementioned stipulations are satisfied, that an application for final subdivision approval be submitted along with documentation that all boundary monuments have been set as required by the Department of Public Works. Do you want to monument the site prior to the final approval?
If this court gives you final approval, you would place the monuments before you came in for final, or we would bond you.
Understood.
At this point, the board hasn't made up its mind.
Okay. I have one, I think, one question that, there's very, very clear suggestions here, thank you. Relative to the wetlands, are you requiring wetlands on the Northern Utility parcel that is shaded in yellow here? There?
I would say yes.
If they are contiguous, especially if they are contiguous.
Subdivision requirements say show wetlands. Article 6 says that if they're a half acre or more, regardless of the lot line, then they're jurisdictional. So this board needs to be able to make that determination. Given the information we have at the present, I'm not sure what the answer is. This will provide that information.
Thank you.
Wetlands don't stop the boundary lines. We've had some people that tried to draw them that way. Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just one more note correction. Your reference to Barbary Lane, Note 11, I think is supposed to be noted down.
Yeah, it appears that there's a renumbering. I'll take care of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other questions, comments? Hopefully, and I know normally we don't go through all those, but seeing as the turnout from the neighborhood, I do want to make sure, that's why we went through it that way, to make sure that everyone realizes how much we go through on this.
Okay, good, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The applicant was aware, but on the application, it states that we do a memo and it is available, so assuming that there is another action to come in, we can pick up the department's memo ahead of time.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, Chairman, just to refresh the board, this is an application, we're treating it as a preliminary because we need additional information. But essentially, we're creating a conforming lot. A lot that is non-conforming and what will remain will not become more non-conforming. In fact, it becomes what's non-conforming. I think with the situation addressing how Barbary Lane should be handled and with the additional information, I think the board, when it does the final review, will have enough information in front of it. So the department is recommending that preliminary subdivision approval be granted subject to those conditions and any others that the board members may have. The development of the lot will bring each, or of any of these lots, will bring it back before this board, and there'll be more than likely numerous public hearings probably before tax, this board, my own feeling, before the conservation commission and what have it.
So what is your pleasure, Board? Move with stipulations and recommendations?
Preliminary.
Preliminary?
Preliminary.
Preliminary, not final.
Please.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded for a preliminary, not final, with the comments. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call a question, all open favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and Chair votes aye. Okay, item D, the application of Richard P. Puzini, owner and DSD Shopping Center LLC, applicant for property located at 1574 and 1600 Woodbury Avenue, wherein site plan approval is requested for the construction of a 4,500 square foot, one-story building for restaurant use with related paving utilities, landscaping, drainage, and associated site improvements. Said property is on our assessment plan 238, as Lot 16 and 17 lies within a general business district. Would like to speak to us tonight. Good evening, Bernie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Bernie Peillage. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Ruby Tuesday. With me this evening is Mr. John Hurley from Ruby Tuesday. Also with me is Luke DiStefano from Bowler Engineering. This is essentially the same site plan that was approved by this board back in late 2000, early 2001. The only change that's actually been made is that the building has been shortened by 10 feet. It's a little over 500 square feet smaller than it was. There have been no changes made to egress, parking, other than 10 less parking spaces are required. As a result, we have all of our required parking on our lot. We don't have to have an easement to park on the Durgen Square Shopping Center parking Access is the same. After going before the technical review committee, recommendations were that our traffic engineer, CLD, be in touch with John Burke for a review of the timing on the signals which are going to be created. As you know, there's a three-way intersection there now. This is directly across from Commerce Way. We have an approved signal plan as part of the 2000 approval. John Burke just wanted to make sure that he checked the traffic counts and if necessary, tweaked the signal timing for those signals once the fourth leg of the intersection is operational. Other than that, there are no changes to the plan that was actually approved by this board previously. We're hoping that the project is definitely a go this time around. It's been approved twice before. All the E's crossed, the I's are dotted. I think the best evidence of that is Mr. Hurley's here making his first appearance before this board on behalf of Ruby Tuesday, and hopefully, this will be approved. And now I'll turn it over to Luke DiStefano from Bowler Engineering if you have any specific questions on the site plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for us at this time?
I've got a few questions. On Chief C3?
Why don't we wait till we get through the rest of the presentation?
Never mind. Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Luke DiStefano with Bowler Engineering, South Carolina, Massachusetts. I can either run through a brief presentation of the overall site development, or I'm sure everyone on the board, if not most, are familiar. I know we've had a relatively long agenda to this point. And if questions are better suited, I can do that, or as I said, I can give a brief overview of the site for anyone who may not be familiar.
Is everyone pretty much familiar with this one, since we've seen it a couple of times, and just want to go back to questions? Yes?
Yes.
As I understand it, it's the development across the street from the Wendy's under the?
Right next to Sleep Quarter.
There's right now, there's a residential building there?
Yep.
A few trees around it?
Yep. Yep. It's one, we've seen this quite a few times, that's why I don't know if you're...
Well, if that's the case, Mr. Chairman, the existing conditions doesn't show the house, unless I'm missing something.
No, the existing conditions plan that was originally shown in our package did not show any of the existing structures. It was basically a topographic demonstration. We have modified the plans, which showed some minor revisions based on the PACs comments that we received from the March 2 hearing. I have those plans with me. They are also shown on the presentation board here. And the way the existing property is developed right now is there are a series of small structures, three wood frame structures to be precise located in these areas of the site, which would be immediately adjacent to the proposed accessway from Woodbury Ave to the western portion of the site.
I guess my point stands, the existing conditions show this as an empty lot, and in fact, it's not, I don't know what that means, but it's just...
The houses will not be, I mean, they are coming, they are being completely torn down, correct?
Correct. The site as it exists, whether it was just topography or the structures themselves, is basically being completely razed. It's a, this is a complete raise and rebuild project where the existing site from top to bottom will be basically demolished, regraded, and reconfigured to meet the new scenario, which is the plan you see here with a 4,500 square foot Ruby Tuesday restaurant located in the northwest corner of the site. The remaining portion of the site, with the exception of approximately a 20-foot wide strip of plantings along the eastern edge, would be dedicated to parking with a reworked service yard being located to the immediate west side of the proposed building, adjacent to the current access corridor servicing the Durgen Square retail property to the west.
If I may, a question for Rick Hopley, please, if I could. Rick, does this fall under the demolition procedures, the notice and all of that?
Yes, it would. Which means a 30-day posting, physically on the building, and then posting in the newspaper, two local newspapers, to afford the public a chance to comment on the raising of the structures on the site. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think the board may recall that we've seen this, that it went through for a lot line relocation, and that subdivision plan does show the existing structures. I don't know if any application has been more often before this board, and it's time it's getting smaller. If we keep this up, it'll disappear then. Basically, I think, the only reason it's here is because, once again, approval lacks. If it will, the board has approved this project. I don't know Attorney Peillage, but my guess is about three times. It's a board choice. I think if Attorney Peillage and I had been able to keep our eye on this one a little closer, we've been pretty good at it, we would have brought it in for a renewal, except that I don't think it's going to qualify for it without going through a public hearing. So perhaps the plan should have had showing the existing structures, but I don't think it's news then, and you just see it as a lot line showing that the structures around there, so you can control a bit this development.
Okay, any other questions?
Just a couple of minor things. On Chief C3, if you notice on Note 24, the cost to the contractor to notify Dig Save 24 hours in advance, I believe that should be 72.
Okay. You actually have that on Note 8 on C4.
I think that's been changed, but I can definitely make that revision if it has. Just a couple other minor comments. I didn't see a detail, anywhere on the detail sheet for the yard hydrant? You could just...
I can add that.
Okay, thank you.
Or I could provide one to the board or to your office.
To the planning board's side. And the only other question I had was, should we be concerned with the dust control plan? Having this work going on in areas that, a parking lot with, I didn't see a dust control plan, but, you know, in an instance such as this, where you've got, that area gets to be...
I think you'd be subject to complaints, and I think that's a good issue to look at, and for that to play off over, Rick, is the weather going a little over, or was? I'd be concerned about it, I guess, if you're doing a demolition.
Just either watering plan, just a note on the erosion control, that if somebody calls, hey, how come this didn't happen?
A note, a plan.
Additional notes, it's probably erosion control, that's all it is.
Okay, got it.
But where, you know, you've got developed all the way around.
Yeah.
Got a problem.
Thank you. Anything else? I just, I have a couple. I didn't see on here, pointing me in the right direction, if I'm missing it, for snow storage or snow removal?
There are no designated areas on this particular plan. What we would see is snow storage areas in this area here. Obviously, we cannot build those up to high an extent due to the fact that that is our primary front lawn, Woodbury. I also believe that snow during heavier storm events would be trucked offsite.
Then would you be objectable to a note that on that front yard there would be for temporary snow storage and larger storms be trucked offsite?
No.
No, you...
No, we're not opposed.
Thank you. Second thing is, just for where the dumpster location is, is that enclosed?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
On all sides. On all sides.
Okay. And is for grease storage and so forth be in that same location?
There's actually a grease trap proposed in this area here. It's a subsurface grease trap. This is just a refuse trash enclosure used for obviously paper goods, et cetera.
What about if you have, if the fryolators inside and you're changing those greases, what happens to the storage of those?
I don't.
John Hurley, Ruby Tuesday Restaurant, 20 Lexington Drive, Pennington, New Jersey. The grease would be in a separate container within that service yard, and that would be picked up.
I'm sorry.
The grease from the fryolators?
Yes.
That would be in a separate container within that service yard.
Okay, so that'll be in the same enclosure. Okay. Thank you. Okay, and one thing that we've started to look into since we began this whole process that is, we're starting to change, and that is lighting. I know proposed on here, we're looking at 30-foot poles. Can we get them lower? What we're trying to do is start getting lighting down lower so it's on the ground, just not one big pole flooding the whole thing. Understand that sometimes if we have to lower it, you might have to add additional to be able to do the parking lot.
Sure, I don't think that's a problem. Our original intent, obviously, was to match the lighting of the Durgen Square plaza itself, but if the board sees that lower lighting is more appropriate, we don't have a problem with that.
Okay, thank you. And I think that will have to be a discretion by the board, because again, that would look odd from the rest of it, but if we're trying to get lighting lower, that's something we might want to consider.
Okay. Mr. Welk?
Mr. Chairman, usually your big three tends to be snow storage, oh heavens, dumpsters, and motorcycle pads. And you mentioned motorcycle pads. Is that appropriate for this application? It is a pub.
I was waiting for that.
I was going to say, it is a pub. I mean, motorcycles. Well, not bicycle, but I mean, motorcycle.
Yeah, usually we put a, usually we do put a cement pad someplace for motorcycle parking and so forth.
And I would deem that that would be appropriate for use such as this, would you not?
We can certainly find the space on the site plan to locate concrete pads on the site.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, John. Any other questions? No?
Mr. Chairman, I just would assume as far as the revised lighting plan, that's something that we can submit for a review and approval by the planning department.
I'm comfortable with that.
Are you looking for 24-foot poles, 20-foot poles, so that we have some?
We've been getting them down to, what are we trying to do there?
I thought it was 30, about, or is that?
Well, right now, they're at 30.
We're at 30.
About, we're trying to get them down to about 20.
These proposals is what, the type of lighting plan, one on an application that's coming up, about if we, if 30 people are going to.
That's fine.
Thank you.
I'm comfortable with that. Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the public? Like to speak two for against this application at this time? Anyone in the public, two for against this application? Third time, seeing no one rise on the closed public hearing? Okay, what is your pleasure, board? I know we have a few stipulations that we just added to this. Mr. Chairman, question?
The memo refers to stipulations in prior iterations of this, I'm assuming. It's like August 16, 2001. Are those stipulations included in this application?
If they're continued on, yes.
Yes. I just want to make sure of that. That's all. Thank you.
And there were some more added stipulations as well. So if we had a motion, it would be to include all of that as well as the ones we just discussed.
All prior stipulations and new stipulations.
Yes.
Okay, so moved.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend that one other be added that the board's not aware of. This application also has to go to Board of Adjustment, and when it was originally proposed, the Board of Adjustment would have met and acted on this on Tuesday, but that meeting was canceled due to bad weather. BOA has seen this probably more times than you have, but I would recommend that you actually go through this recommendation, but add one stipulation that leaves the Board of Adjustment that's not necessarily swayed. How would you like to phrase that, perhaps attorney Pelech? What I want to do is keep.
Well, their approval could be conditioned upon approval by the ZBA.
That would do it. That way, the ZBA is free to act on it, but once they act, you don't have to see it come back, and this application would have been completed.
Didn't we have a different wording that was something to the effect that our recommendation should have no effect on their decision?
That's fine also.
Why do you make that? I was trying to remember.
I was too, and it wasn't quite as, quite as clean as Bernie did it.
He went to law school.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to get the real wording. So I guess it would be that our decision, our stipulations, I don't know, should have no effect on the decision, or should not sway the decision, or you know?
I think, or the way Bernie handled it, it's fine, either way. We know what we mean.
Yeah, but we want to make sure that the Board of Adjustment knows what we mean.
Which is, that our decision is not to bias the decision to point approval.
Okay, fair enough, not binding on the Board of Adjustment, good.
Good enough.
Mr. Hopley?
Quick question for the department. This is a general business zone, I believe, according to C3.
Correct.
What's the height of, allowable height of structure in general business?
I think it's 60 feet.
Is it really?
Excellent.
I knew that was central business.
It's 60 feet, or 50 feet.
Okay, well, then the note's okay. I saw 60 feet, and I said, my, that's tall.
The encouragement is actually, the encouragement is actually to build, I don't know if this building's 60 feet.
No. Well, Note 30 is somewhat ambiguous, and the maximum height of the building is 60 feet.
Oh, we're not 60. The plan resides in zoning, but 22 feet high.
I would suggest that probably Note 30 should be rephrased.
Okay.
On Chief C3?
Is it really 60, though?
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? None, I recall, do you have a second? I don't believe you do. Second. Thank you. Discussion on the motion.
Yes, I'll be voting against the motion. I voted against the first time and the second time, it was in front of me. Very simply, the applicant's done a wonderful job, the department's done a wonderful job. I just, there's one last little piece of green space on Woodbury Avenue, and this is the last thing, and I don't have the heart to vote for. They thought it was crazy the first two times, so it's not like it's never happened before, but I'll be voting against the motion.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? None, I'm going to call a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, moving on to item E, the application of Robert L. Casilla, LLC owner and Portsmouth Computer Group Appropriate Infrastructure Located at 30 Marona Road Extension, wherein site plan approval is requested for the construction of a 1,255 square foot, one-story addition to the right of an existing structure, and a 1,200 square foot, second story over existing garage with related paving, utilities, landscaping, drainage, and associated site improvements. Said property is shown on Assessor Plan 253 as Lot 4 and lies within an industrial district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Bernie Pelech, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Portsmouth Computer Group. This is a project on Marona Road Extension that did go before the Technical Advisory Committee on March 2nd, and also received approval from the zoning board previous to that. It's good to see some life come to the end of Marona Road Extension because that area, if you had a chance to go out there, certainly could use some improvement, and I think this is a necessary first step. This is a form of Brigham tool and die. Across the street is the Baumann property, which is also vacant, abandoned. We had to go before the Board of Adjustment because, as you know, to the rear of this property, there is just a tremendous upslope and increase in grade by about 30 feet, which basically makes it prohibitive as far as parking behind the building. We did receive the necessary variance to be allowed to put the necessary parking in the front of the building. John Shagnon at Ambed Engineering did the site plan. Only two recommendations came out of the Technical Advisory Committee on the 2nd of March. The first was that a five-foot concrete sidewalk be placed along the property line, which your plans now show. This is an older plan. The second is that the location of the water line serving the property be located. I believe the plans reflect both of those comments, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Pelech at this time?
I've got one, Bernie. That'd be easy, John.
They've been easier all night.
I have my PE stamp with me this morning.
I've got a couple, actually. The loading zone that's shown here, I've got a little bit of a concern depending on what type of vehicle comes in there. You know, for a UPS type of box truck?
Yeah, Dave Hodgson's here, and he can comment, but from my knowledge, and they used to be located on Fleet Street, across the street from my office, and now they're down on Islington, they don't have any, anything large at all, no 18-wheelers, everything is FedEx, UPS type of.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure.
Mr. Hopley?
Got a question. Bernie, kind of out of the ordinary, I talked to the design engineer for the actual addition, and a couple of weeks ago, and there was some questions, he had a means of egress question, and there were some several options to solve the issues, but one of those options was an outside stair, and it's not shown on this plan, and you know, as presented and advertised, just questioning whether that option was taken, you may not know.
I don't have any, any knowledge of that. Dave, do you know anything?
If you could come up with a name and address for the record, please. David Hodgson, 953 Simpson Street. Yes, we are, and have an external stair.
Okay, that's the problem.
It has the, we have both internal and external, and up the plans, he shows the exterior upper door.
Yep. Okay, thanks. Site plan doesn't show it, that's the problem.
Well, we can certainly submit a plan with the, with the external stair shown. Do you know where it is, Dave? Do you? Well, we'll, yeah, you know, we certainly don't have a problem with submitting that, showing that wherever that external stair is.
Is that something we can, if so, stipulate and have you? That's fine, it's just, it is a recurring problem with projects that come through one way to this board and then another way final, and then I, we end up picking, picking it up, and it's got to come back.
Well, then we'll have, we'll add a stipulation out, that we'll make sure that it's on there and for review by you.
Yeah, that's fine, it's just, this time I had some advance notice, and I didn't see it.
My recommendation would be, would be also with Lucy, so that the board could determine whether it's in the yard, that would be our primary concern, and that's oftentimes what happens.
Okay.
Sort of discouraging you to find the sound of suspicion.
Not a problem, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Bernie, I just have one, I didn't see lighting.
I believe the only lighting, and I'm not sure because I don't know what John has planned, but I believe there was external building-mounted lighting. I'm not sure that there was any pole lighting proposal on site here now.
So we're just talking about a couple of, couple of light bulbs in a lantern-type thing?
Yes, certainly nothing, no high pole.
Okay. If those can be marked on the plans.
Yes, we'll be happy to put those on also on the revised plan, with the external stair.
Tell John thank you for snow storage and enclosed dumpsters.
I will pass the word along, thank you.
But no motorcycle?
Well, I wasn't going to go further. Any other questions? No, thank you. Anyone in the public like to speak two for against this application at this time? Anyone in the public two for against? Third time, seeing no one rise on the closed public hearing? What is your pleasure, board? We have the stip, the two stipulations from the department as well as ones we just discussed. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. I'm assuming with stipulations?
With stipulations, yes.
Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'm going to call a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Okay, that takes care of our public hearings for tonight. Moving on to the city council referrals and requests for six or seven Ridge Court construction and reconstructions up here.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the department's been aware of a great deal of interest in the Ridge's court issue. It's generated a lot of public interest, so the department was thinking that it would recommend that you schedule a public meeting on this at the April meeting. We have also chatted, or talked with attorney Brad Lowndes, who is representing the applicant, and they have also requested that this issue be tabled to the April meeting, so that they can also present their issues. My recommendation would be at this time, if you actually table this April 15th, so we continue to get that, also by doing that, we'll be able to advertise a meeting notice to a butters, so that everyone will have an opportunity to address the board. As you know, water issues, littoral rights, everything else are extremely complex, and we'll also try to have some legal backing in terms of some of the issues involved. What has turned out is the state statutes do address the extension of the street into the title areas, and our regulations govern that, and these have to be reviewed. So the department's recommendation is that you table this to your April 15th meeting for a public meeting. I don't know if anyone in the public gets here on that, because we've tried to get this word out, but that's why I've given a little bit of a longer spiel on this, but that's what the request is that we have received.
I'll ask a question. Is there anyone in the public here for this particular matter? Seeing no one, so I'm going to assume that the word got out, and I see that also in your note that the applicant, this particular one, has also requested a table. Okay, so do I have a motion? So moved. To our, moved and seconded to our April 15th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Okay, old business, the request of the estate of Anthony Giovannitone for an additional one-year extension for conditional use permit for property located offline roadwork, and the conditional use permit is requested as allowed in Article 6, Section 10, 608B of the zoning ordinance to allow construction of a two-story, 28-by-65-foot building upon, building upon a paved accessway within an inland wetlands protection district buffer zone. Said property is shown on Assessor Plan 286 as Lots 22A and lies within a general business district.
Mr. Chairman, to maintain consistency, Tony was a dear friend of mine, and I guess the estate would carry on, so I'm going to recuse myself from any discussion in this.
Thank you. Tony would appreciate that.
I believe board members probably remember these approvals. They were basically three approvals, the zoning board, and then two approvals granted by this board, first for the conditional use permit, and secondly for a site plan, where Tony was going to have his woodworking shop located off that offline road on that area which was once a paved right-of-way into Stratum Tire. Unfortunately, Mr. Giovannitone passed away before the building could be commenced. What then ensued was a still ongoing probate issue amongst family members. I am working on behalf of Mr. Giovannitone's son, who is, has asked me to file the application for the extension, believing that the probate matters would. for the extension, believing that the probate matters would be resolved hopefully within the next several months, and he can go forward with building this, with his structure. So, nothing has changed out there, obviously. The GIB station was there. There's no changes whatsoever to surrounding properties when you've granted this approval. So, as far as the conditional use permit, the wetlands are the wetlands, and the proposal is the proposal, and nothing has really changed. Thank you.
The issue that we have, Lo, is you can't grant an approval because it's been already extended once. And I've talked with Attorney Pelech, and I think we're in general agreement. There are two ways to proceed. One, if you want to just take it through the public hearing process with everything that's in the record, that you could retable it to April 15th for a public hearing. Or, if you wish that the Conservation Commission gets a chance to review it, in order to save some time, I'd recommend that you also send it to them and get a report back for your April 15th. Either one of those two approaches would be appropriate.
Well, upon looking at this, I don't see why we can't do both. I mean, I have a little doubt the Conservation Commission, without speaking for them, will probably meet before our next meeting. We could put it on their agenda, and basically, if we had a public hearing on the 15th, it wouldn't alter the timetable at all. The only other thing I had a question of is, do we have the power to, I believe it was, to recommend the Conservation Commission extend its own approval of something?
No, they're just recommending to you, so what you'd be doing is saying, in light of the passage of time, Attorney Pelech would be there representing and answering any questions as to whether or not anything has changed out there, so the Conservation Commission would revisit or to monitor their recommendation, and then they're saying what happened then at the planning board.
Sure. Okay, I don't know if...
Either route's fine, it's just which one does the board wish.
Because then our own conditional use rules mean, I mean, I'm not sure about their approvals. Do they have to make a second approval because we have to make a second approval? If that's the case, that's the case.
That's why it's an option to this board, because you're the moment of authority to take the action.
Sure. Then I'd like to move, actually, why don't we go with John's question first, and I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I was just wondering, don't we have anything in bylaws and rules and regulations that under circumstances such as this, that temporary approval could be granted for an extension without going through the whole process?
Well, we do have the one...
We don't have any idea when it's going to come out of probate, do you?
Most, well, let me answer your first question first, and then, almost every planning board I know certainly has the ability to waive their own rules and regulations. Whether this board can or can't, I don't know. I will defer to David. I'm not going to give a legal opinion. Second question, hopefully in the next several months, it's going to be out of probate.
Yeah. Let me answer it this way. If you send it back through the process, there's basically a two-year window. The reason you wanted control on these was so they would end...
I understand that. I understand that.
And frankly, that's what this was meant for. My recommendation is, you either decide that you have enough information so you can do it on April 15th, or do you want to involve the Conservation Commission? That's really the...
Mr. Chairman, my only, I tend to feel the same way that John does. I mean, it seems like a nice warm and fuzzy application, but I think the reason why we set up these rules is to be consistent whenever anybody comes before the board with a second extension. And I think this may serve as a precedent, whether, that someone will say, "Hey, wait a minute, you..." They didn't have to go through the process after a second extension. They go, "I don't want to," even though they're not so warm and fuzzy, they might be a for if I. So, I would feel more comfortable, I would feel more comfortable having this be the precedent that we lay.
The main reason for it going this way, Mr. Chairman, was that, you know, we're talking about a death of an applicant. We can certainly stand on our own two feet and explain that we gave an extension for reasons such as that, to let the family take care of everything in due course, and that was my only intention.
No, and I, as much as I understand where you're going with it, I'm going to have to side with Mr. Will on this, but I think it's proper to go through the motions on it.
Mr. Chairman, therefore, I'd like to move that we table this request, the April 15th meeting for a public hearing, and in the interim, recommend that this go to the Conservation Commission for review as well.
Seconded. Moving, seconded. Any discussion on it? I just want to say that on this one, the only reason I'm in agreement that it can go back to the Conservation Commission is just that they will be meeting prior to. If they were not, then I would not be in favor of it.
Certainly. I wanted to bring that out, just to make sure that they were, that wasn't going to be a conflict on the applicant, or harm the applicant in any way.
Okay. Any other question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye.
Who seconded this?
Right.
Rated.
No, I'm in motion.
Charge me.
Mr. Chairman, before we go to the next application, the next amended site plan review, I must recuse myself. I recused myself from it previously because I was in a butter. Now that I've moved and dawned coca-like consistently, I must recuse myself, even though I've moved.
And I am doing the same. I will abstain from discussion in void.
Okay. We still have plenty on the board. We're fine. Okay. Our final item on the agenda this evening, the amended site plan review. The revised application of Great Islington Street LLC for property located at 271 Islington Street, excuse me, 871 Islington Street, where an approval of amended plan is requested for the conversion of an existing structure from office use to 14 dwelling units and artisan studio space with associated site improvements. The proposal calls for the removal of a section of existing building some 1,730 square feet. Said property is shown on Assessor Plan 165 of Lot 4 and lies within a business district.
Mr. Chairman, I can just set the stage?
Go ahead, David.
Especially before Attorney Pelech and I end up sparring with the wordage. You have actually reviewed this application at 14 units. The difficulty was, the application was for 12 units. So, the only thing we're asking you to do tonight is to reaffirm and to allow the public the opportunity to comment on an application that was indicated for 12, but every plan that you're looking at, I believe is similar to what was done before, and it shows 14.
This was a glitch. The plan you approved was 14-unit plan. The application was advertised as a 12-unit. Originally, you approved the 12-unit. We came back in with an amended plan for 14 units. You approved that plan, but the advertisement said 12, even though the plan you reviewed and approved was 14.
Well, the advertisement and the application...
Right, right. The application never changed. David's, neither one of us want to take full blame. It was a joint effort. In any event, you've already approved this plan. Now that it's advertised properly, we're asking you to approve it again.
Is there ever going to be a time when you two can play nice?
Mr. Hopley, in fact, picked it up at the last meeting, after you had voted. He said, "David, is this going to cause a problem that the application says 12, and we just approved the plan for 14?"
Thank you, Mr. Hopley, for doing your job.
I should have done it before the vote, right?
No, that would have been dangerous. So, with that, there's, with that, it's a matter of wordage.
To open the public hearing.
Yeah, to open the public hearing on it. Did you have a comment for it?
I'll actually have a question. I guess, I hate to do this, but both to David and to Bernie. David used the term "similar" application. I would like to get, for the record, this is exactly the same application as was before this board with the wording of 12, but now the wording is 14. Otherwise, it is identical to what this board approved.
No. The application is different, other than the wording, but based upon suggested changes from the Technical Advisory Committee at the last meeting, the lights, one of the light poles has been moved on the site plan from that one that you previously approved, based upon a recommendation of David Defosis, and an unenclosed awning way now has sides on it. Other than that, it's the same.
Okay, for the record, other than those three issues, 12 and 14...
The plan is identical, the floor plan, the site plan.
Okay, thank you.
And the department was aware of those, too, because we worked with the applicant on them.
Just want to make sure, because similar doesn't mean exactly the same, so...
I'll let you know, we put the plan on a light table and matched the vegetation to it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. This is not open to, for public.
Yes, it is.
It is.
This is actually the only reason we're doing this, in case some member of the public, hypothetically, was satisfied that 12 has a problem, now it's 14. That's to afford the public the opportunity to comment on the actual correct application.
Reason I said this was when I read the document. Is there anyone in the public like to speak two, four against this application at this time? Anyone in the public, two, four against? Third time on the closed public hearing? Okay, what is your pleasure, Board?
Mr. Chairman, I can ask a question, please, in this name.
Are you going to do a recopit?
No, no. This parking lot, is this existing and proposed going to stay the same?
Everything we approved prior is...
No, I'm talking what's out there right now to what this plan proposes.
Well, they haven't done the project yet.
Then my question is, are we going to show any proposed site grading around here? Or we're just going to show it with arrows?
Evidently, the board deemed it was appropriate at your last meeting when you voted to approve it, and when it went through technical advisory, they felt they had sufficient information on it.
Okay.
Is it on traffic laws?
No, I'm talking just the spot grades. Finish grading?
It is open, so if you want to, for example...
If you want to add it, now's the time.
But I'm just indicating that what this process was...
And that's why I'm asking the question. I'm not...
It's something we didn't do prior.
Typically, on a site plan, you put proposed grades that would indicate...
I would suggest you make it a conditional.
That's fine, then we'll do that.
Mr. Pelech, I don't know if this answers your question, John, but there's no change to the grade of the existing parking lot. We're basically adding islands and curbing.
Then you've answered my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're overlaying it.
Okay, are there any other questions? Can I have a motion? Yeah.
I move to grant the, grant the proposal for the 14 minutes.
Okay. Seconded.
Seconded, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns? None, I'm going to call a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye. You're all set. Okay. As always, before I ask for adjournment, there is...
David Slidway.
Two items David's going to slide up on us. One of them is just a quick read to the CPD, just for the land use, subcommittee meeting is going to be the first of April.
Just, we've completed all the subcommittee meetings, and Mr. Painter, they're going to try to have the revisions ready and available. The suggestion is, if you would like, and I think Ken was referring on it, that we meet April 1st in a session to go over some of those changes. So, I'd like to...
This will be the first look at it as an entire board. So, I'd like to do it on April 1st to be clear of time. That would be good.
Seven?
Stay right at the seven o'clock time.
Is this the Thursday?
Yep.
That's the...
That's the Hall of Fame.
Yes.
I won't be here on April 1st.
Thank you.
The second one is, if I could, Mr. Chairman, just to...
Three, few.
PSNH has filed a revised application with additional supplementary materials. It is going through the tax process, and that meeting is scheduled for April 6, I believe. Yes, April 6. We've indicated, and you've given us your permission to schedule a special meeting as appropriate. We'll keep you appraised of that, but I'm assuming now that it would be probably late April, possibly early May. But PSNH has filed a revised application. We're starting the process again, and I would indicate to you the plans were brought to us on the dolly. We have more information. Do you have a question?
Done with that, if anyone has anything else. If I have an adjournment?
So moved.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.